I'd like to call this meeting of Zion City Council to order. The clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner McKinney?
Here.
Mayor Hill?
Here. Before we start, I'd like to, apparently it's my birthday and my wife has decided to deliver some cake, so if you don't have cake and you would like cake, just raise your hand and we will make an exception to this meeting that she may wander around and deliver cake until it's all delivered. Okay, hi there. And it's also David's birthday tomorrow, but, so there's another cake over there, so if you want two pieces of cake, you can have two pieces. Pastor Fielding?
Yes, sir. In Psalm 78, it says, "God chose David his servant and took him from the sheepfolds. From following nursing use, he brought him to shepherd Jacob his people, Israel his inheritance. With upright heart he shepherded them and guided them with his skillful hand." You know, when I look at this, David was a shepherd, just an average guy, and God took him from the sheepfold and used him to govern and to lead his people. And I look at this council, I see a bunch of average people that God just set his hand upon and is using to guide our community, and I thank you for that. And I want to pray that God uses you to guide this community skillfully. Amen? Father, I thank you for these men. Lord, they're just average guys that have heard your call and have been obedient to that, and Lord, they're just trying to do the best they can and to do what's best for our community, and I thank you for that. And Lord, I pray, God, that you would give them that skill and that wisdom that's needed. Lord, I know they face many problems and difficult situations, and so, Lord, I'm asking that you would give them, grant them the wisdom that's needed, and, Lord, I thank you for it. Lord, I ask for your order and for your agenda in this room today, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Would you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item number four is agenda changes. Do any of the commissioners have any agenda changes? Mayor, I'd like to add personnel to the closed session, so discussion on personnel. We will add personnel, that is item number 13, and we will add personnel to that. Commissioners have any other changes? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
So move.
Have a motion? In a second, through discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number five is special presentations, and we have a few of them tonight, and they may take a little while, so bear with us, but this is the end of the summer, and many of the activities that take place throughout the city happen in the summer, and so we would like to recognize some of the people that have been busy with us and busy with Zion Township Supervisor Sheri, and she's got some presentations, and we're going to start with zinnias for Zion.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Commissioners. I first want to just start by thanking you for the resolution that you passed on March 20th, to be willing to make the zinnia, the Zion flower. It has definitely been a colorful summer, and the number of people that have been involved in this project blew my mind, so it's been very fun. So, I really want to recognize the entire community for how they came out to support the project. We have 65 people, businesses, and organizations that we're sending certificates to, thanking for their involvement, so that was a lot of involvement. Starting with Anton's Greenhouse, who grew 212 flats of flowers for 29 separate orders. And I'm going to, as I read this, I'm just going to give out certificates as I talk about them. Mary Hildebrandt helped with marketing while her mother Lou did all the planting, so I saw Lou here, so I'm going to give, where's, there you go. So Lou, just to say thank you for you and pass it on to your daughter, your help.
When Sheri calls your name, please come up.
Yeah, oh, that's a good idea. So, let's see. Rosemary Kauf, Wendy Driver, and Cindy Nugent were on the planning committee, and I actually have your certificate in with your mom's stuff, so I'll give that to you when we, when we recognize her. So Rosemary and Wendy, here you go. Thank you very, very much. Wendy, wait, she's...
Guys, do you have a picture?
If we could do a group shot when we get all done, would that be okay? Let's see, we had three seed companies that sent us seeds, Joyful Butterfly, Applewood Seed Company, and Ball Horticulture Company. They donated enough seeds that we were able to distribute 1,500 packets across the community. We had Northwest Automotive and Tire, Deb's Unique Closet, Market Square Hotel, Hokima's Restaurant, Ace Hardware, the Zion Park District, the Township, the city, the library, Rogers Towing, all distributed the seeds, and we had Debbie Pocky help to do the distribution. And so, Deb, if you want to come up, let me find your certificate. It might be in the other, no, I'm sure I've got it. Oh, this one.
And you can just sit right here, so we're ready for the picture.
That has been one of the cheerleaders since the very beginning. We had Andrew Cook Magnet School in Waukegan, led by Jared Rank, they grew zinnias for us in the greenhouse. It was a learning year, most of them burned out, but we'll know for next year, so that was good. We had Chris Segren, Jody Petrie, and Kelsey Malik planted the planters along Emes and Shiloh Boulevard, and then John and Peggy Steele, as well as North Point Resources, helped to water those planters. Any of those guys are not here, did not see them? Oh, come on up, Jody. I'm going to give you yours and Kelsey's certificate. We go your way. Then we had Kathy Champagne, did she make it to the meeting? She never misses a meeting. Okay, she watered and took pictures for us, as well as Gibby Buckholz and Elroy Reed. So Gibby took the pictures, Gibby, and made sure that Elroy had them for the ZB Times, so Gibby, I'm going to give you Elroy's as well. So here we go. This is Gibby.
I want to see how Gibby's going to be in the picture.
Right? It wouldn't surprise me. We had the Illinois Dunson Garden Club, that was one of the very first supporters, Gail, where's Gail at?
Oh.
Oh, she's over there taking pictures. And April Myers, so they were the co-presidents, and now it's actually April Miles and Myers and Jeanne LaBelle that are the co-cheermans, but they are one of the sponsors of some of the prizes, as well as April. She really pulled out the steps to help us with the awards and the judging, so...
April.
Come on, what did I just call you?
April.
April, April, yes. There we go. So here's for the Garden Club and you, and then here's yours, Gail.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Let's see, Roger Whitmore also went way out of his way to assist with voting. If anybody, if any of you follow him on Facebook, it was hysterical. He was giving out seeds left and right and trying to get everybody involved. He's one of the main sponsors for the prizes, and he's on a cruise with his wife tonight. So is somebody here from Rogers Towing though? He was going to send somebody. Okay, so I want to recognize them as well. Let's see, so that's those guys. Okay, so there are three people, well, so, and just so you know, the prizes that we have tonight all came from Rogers Towing, Dunson Garden Club, Zion Township, Anton's, and that's it. So, and the Illinois Dunson Garden Club actually donated gift cards for Ace Hardware, so we kept everything locally, so I appreciated that. So we had three people that went above and beyond for the zinnias for Zion tonight, and I don't see a couple of them. We had, let me find their stuff, Sally Gusterson, who works for the city of Zion, so I'm just going to say it into the camera so she can watch it on the channel. Sally was the one that, when I didn't even think it could work or how it could work, she sat down with me and had just a ton of ideas. She worked really hard to help get it organized and just helped to, like, put the wind under the wing, so we planted more flowers in every Zion location, and what I loved about this project was nobody spent extra money, because everybody already buys flowers to put them in, so there was no expense to it. It was just planting zinnias instead of whatever else has been planted in the past. So Sally's still not here, but I really want to recognize her for her dedication to the group. And then with the Zion Park District, Mike Priller. Mike's not here either, he was going to try to be here. Marilyn's here from the Park District, but we, on a Sunday, Jody, where's Jody? They were trying to do the planters on Emes and Shiloh, and he actually offered to come out on his day off and help in any way that he could. He was just an incredible support, and he took so much pride in planting the zinnias on the Park District properties, it made everybody giggle. So kudos to him, and I'll make sure you get this. Then we decided to have a volunteer of the year, so we had one person that was crazier than me, I know it's hard to believe, but he actually set up his car, and I don't know how to talk here, he set up his car with bins and filled them with water and buckets, and then he was notified by the watering police that you're supposed to use a sprinkling can, and so they left the sprinkling can on his front porch, and I'm not going to bust him out and say that he never used it, because it would have taken him four years, because he was actually watering 21 locations or something like that. I mean, it was crazy. He was amazing. So I really want to, in front of God and everyone, recognize Joe Kenobi as the, this year's volunteer of the year for all of us. She thought he was crazy, so...
No, she knows I'm crazy.
Right? Do you want to say anything?
I guess I don't know what to say. I wasn't expecting any of this. This was something that I was happy to do, I would be happy to do it again, although if we can find some more volunteers, next year I'd be happy to try. It was actually a lot of fun, and it was fun to watch, because in the spring, it was really dry. I don't know if anyone remembers, but it was really dry, and those flowers had to be watered all the time. But those things started out, little tiny flowers with, you know, no buds on or anything, and I got to watch them grow into, you know, what they've turned into all around town. So it was a lot of fun, I really enjoyed it.
And now, we had the committee that went around and judged, and we had originally planned on having four prizes, and we couldn't decide, so we ended up doing the top 10 zinnia locations in the community. And so we're going to start with number 10, which receives honorable mention, and that is the Zion Benton Public Library. Is anybody here from the library? Oh, woo-hoo! There you go. So thank you so much, if you could share that. They planted gorgeous zinnias along the back of the parking lot, so they were beautiful. Number nine is the Amadea Muslim Community. Siria was going to be here, I don't see her yet.
That was very pretty.
Around their signage, and then they had them all at their entrance, it was absolutely gorgeous. So, oh, shoot, I'll do those next. And then number eight was Kindon's Pre幼Home. So I don't know if any of you guys saw them, you could see them when you drove down Sheraton Road, but when you actually pulled in, they had that, they were everywhere, so kudos to them. So they got number seven, no, number eight. Number seven goes to Culvers, and they're not there yet either, so obviously Culvers, they did a great job with their, with planting their zinnias. Elroy Reed's here, he missed his award. Okay, number six is... So the first four were honorable mentions, the next four are winners, and then we have two champions. So number six is Rolling Hills Campus, and if you drove by their place, if you would like to pick them up, if you drove by their place, they really did an outstanding job out by their signage. They also did them by their building, they really did a phenomenal job, so thank you so much, we appreciate you guys. They were planting them and putting them on their tables. Let's give you, if you want to take that to the... So that was number six. Number five is one of our favorite seniors in the community, Ms. Rae Mako-Brad. And if you went down Lewis Avenue and you saw the incredible garden on the east side of the road, right by 29th Street, she had just rows and rows of zinnias. Each, the, well, the committee actually, each brought home a bouquet from her garden, because they were so beautiful. I'm going to give this to, so Cindy, here's your certificate. There you go. And then here is yours.
Can you go stand by your...
Sure.
You know, we really, and the people smiled, but I was told that you got a letter taken to your office, and someone said they'd be glad to stay with you.
So that person is actually here, she's sitting right back there, Kim. Yes, Kim Wade?
What did I do?
You're the one that called and said, somebody better be getting an award that grew those zinnias on Lewis Avenue.
The other time I drove by there, I took my brother away, and I didn't even know they were having the contest.
I'm delighted.
Yes. Then we have number four winner, Joelle, is Zion Senior Cottage. If you did not get a chance to go down to Zion, now Lou should get a prize too, because she helped plant all of them, asked Laura. But they really, when she put in her order, I'm like, you sure you want all these zinnias? She's like, absolutely, and they did, they planted them, and they are absolutely gorgeous, so, so here you go. Then number three is NNT's Restaurant. If you drove by there, yes, sir?
Sheri's working tonight, she apologized that she couldn't be here.
Okay, so you're going to bring the prize, or should we bring it over after the meeting?
Well, depending on how late it is, I might be able to catch one for tonight.
So NNT's, if you drove by there, really, their streetscape, they did an absolutely phenomenal job. And so then we have the top two winners. So I had a few people actually tell me about this house on Bethel Boulevard, and I drove by, and incredible, it was so beautiful, and so I want to have Bethel's, please come up. And he actually shared that, your son or your stepson?
My son.
His son brought home seeds from school a few years ago?
Yes.
Do you want to share that story?
Well, a couple of years ago, my son brought up, like, a plant from school, an zinnia, and it just grew. I watered, and it grew, and I got a bunch of flowers, so I said, I'm going to save the seeds, and now I'm getting these from all of them.
He had no idea we were even doing this project, but he planted them all over his yard, so, yes, so thank you. Even better, I got a tour of his house, the whole committee got a tour. Beautiful, oh, so thank you very much, yes. And that, so that is the homeowner champion, if you get a chance to drive by there. The champion for the businesses, if you have been to Herman Park Center this year, if you haven't, go there. It looks phenomenal. They have done such an incredible job. So David, I don't know who all you have here representing your clan, if you want to... In order to, here, let's move up here. In order to do what they did, you had to have a lot of waters, because there are a lot of zinnias.
They got to thank the Park District for paying the water bills.
Right. And buying the flowers and paying the wages for the people that are doing the watering.
You're just right. Now, to Sanders.
Thank you.
Wait, Marilyn, see your picture?
Thank you.
So we just want to thank you guys, and what was hilarious, is David's first statement was, I didn't even know we got, wait till next year.
Sheri, can we get them ready? Are we okay to get them all up front now? We got time?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's everybody, if we could have everybody come up.
It's your dinners.
Wait, wait, wait. I also want to recognize Grace Gomboa. So Grace works in my office, and she had no idea what she was getting into, and she ended up packing more seeds and having more fun with it. So Grace, I would love for you to also come up and recognize you tonight. She definitely would. We are very blessed to thank you for being with Grace, so thank you. And then I'll give everybody, so if we can have everybody come up, because I also have champion medals for all of you for the kickoff launch year, for everyone. So if everybody can come up, Joe, you don't get one, because you got your volunteer medal. So all the winners come up, and all of the people that got a certificate, and she was with Grace. Here with the winner, you are in there. So, let's see.
Thank you, appreciate it. We may not be able to... Thank you. Good evening. Get in, move, come on back as far as you can this way, and get in tight, or Gibby's got to try and get everybody.
Rosemary, you didn't get one. Elroy, you get one. Let's see, who else got a volunteer? Yep, just all of the volunteers.
Just like when we were in high school, guys, kind of, nice line.
Everybody, are we missing anybody else?
Like your cheerleaders.
You had come up too. Laura helped actually to plant in the beginning of the summer, and that was not easy work, so...
Yeah, it was really hard.
Yeah. Okay, so that's everybody that's moving, hi, and Mr. Matthews.
Marlon up here. You have representatives. You might want to...
Where'd you plant flowers at, Elroy? You're supposed to get this picture, Gibby.
I'm kidding. He gives me a hard time, I give him a hard time.
Hey, Michael, why don't you take a picture for him?
Here we go. Perfect, right there. Need one more, just forget those grids, right there. Where's the mayor, where's the mayor at? Stand up, stand up.
Stand up, Al.
Okay, there he is, there he is. One more, right there. Perfect, thank you, guys.
As well as Joe Kenobi, to do one last picture. Do you want your flag up? Yes, you probably should have. And Elroy? Oh, yeah, El, yeah.
Those cords, stick it out?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so, okay.
Give me a picture of which ones, everybody who up there plants?
Absolutely.
We got to watch the glass, but the lights are... Turn it just a little sideways, the other way. Oh, yeah, the other way, you got the flash, you're right there, yeah, perfect, right there. Ready, Sheri? Okay, there we go, right there. Need one more, right there, perfect, right there. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, very much.
Sheri, did you plant any zinnias?
Oh, yes.
So I'd like to know what award Sheri gets.
This is the award, right? This is the whole award.
You did plant zinnias.
Yes, she did. Yeah.
Thank you so much, girls. It's really...
Sheri, do you want to do Zion Together? Next on the agenda for a presentation is Zion Together, and this is something that Sheri was also very involved with, so I'll let her lead this.
So, so both, I worked with two students this summer, or three students, actually, Ronell Pipes, Chris Castellanos, and Amir Montgomery, and they put together a project called Zion Together, and it was a contest where you had to get at least three of your neighbors and at most 10 of your neighbors on a team, and there was a list of like 75 things that you could do to build community, and in order to get credit for it, you had to take pictures and send it in. So we had three teams that competed this year, and I just want to give a shout out. Ashley Mader had a team, as well as Soraya Latif, who was going to be here, and she isn't here, but the winning team was a team called Zinnie Bee's Nice Neighbors, right? You had to come up with a name for your team, and, hang on, let me find my notes here. But I just want to recognize the work of the youth. They presented at every taxing body meeting to gain their support. They worked out the details, they created a promotional video and website, they worked hard to get the teams on board, and, let's see, oh, the awards were given out at the Community of Character Walk, thanks to Deputy Chief Kirk Henderson, but I would like, and so I recognize those guys. The prizes included six tickets to Great America from District 6, tickets to an event at Zion Benton Township High School, a free workout at the Zion Park District Sports Arena, a golf pass for each person, a pool party, and community gift certificates from Zion Township, and then additionally, the city of Zion has some prizes to be able to award tonight, and I brought certificates for the creators of it, and I will get those to them. But we have two, are you guys the only two here tonight from the team? I think so. So Jim and Felly are two of the teammates. Would you guys want to come up and just share a little bit about what the experience was? You too, Felly, because you're more, you know, oh, you just go talk in front of a crowd. When she's by herself, they're going to talk. Actually, she was planting lilies in her yard, and we've been neighbors for 25 years and barely talked with Wade, right? But I saw her planting, and I had some zinnias, and so I dug them up and I planted them around her lilies, and her lilies died and the zinnias bloomed, so next year, we're going to do all zinnias.
I think one of the most important things we did is, our neighbor across the street from us on Barnhart Court had a lawnmower, and it broke down, so he has a double lot, and his grass got sometimes as much as a foot high, so, but Ed, who's not here, he led the leg with his lawn mower, and Sheri, she was there, did the same thing, and so, and we cut his grass about four times this summer to help out, to keep the community looking nice, and I'd do it again. Had to get my mower fixed a couple of times, but it needed it. But, you know, I think these are the things that makes this town come together. It's important that we help each other out, whether in differences to what we believe or think or political aspects. We're in a town of approximately 25,000 people, we have to pull together and make this community great, because this is a nice community.
You too, Felly, because you're working. Oh, you just go talk in front of a crowd. When she's by herself, they're gonna talk. Actually, she was planting lilies in her yard. And we've been neighbors for 25 years and barely talked with Wave, right? But I saw her planting, and I had some zinnias. And so I dug them up and I planted them around her lilies. And her lilies died and the zinnias bloomed. So next year, we're gonna do all zinnias.
I think one of the most important things we did is a neighbor thing. Our neighbor across the street from us on Barnhart Court had a lawnmower and it broke down. So he has a double lot. And his grass got sometimes as much as a foot high. But Ed, who's not here, he led the leg with his lawn power mower. And Sherri, she was there, did the same thing. And so, and we cut his grass about four times this summer to help out, to keep the community looking nice. And I'd do it again. Had to get my mower fixed a couple of times. But it needed it. But, you know, I think these are the things that makes this town come together. It's important that we help each other out. Whether in differences to what we believe or think or political aspects. We're in a town of approximately 25,000 people. We have to pull together and make this community great. Because this is a nice community. I've been here over 30 years in this community. And I've lived a lot of places. I spent 25 years in the Navy. Been a lot of parts of the United States and outside the United States. And if I had a place to pick to live for the rest of my life, I'm already here, and I need to move. Thank you, folks. I appreciate it.
And we have a prize for you guys. We have a tour of the Zion Police Department and a tour of the Zion Fire Department. So here's the certificates for that.
If you wanna share the other prizes.
Right, and we have... Well, you wanna... Do you wanna explain who's getting them?
Well, so just first...
I said one is worth more than the other.
Well, I also wanted to just correct one thing. I'm sure that grass wasn't a foot high. I'm sure it was just under eight inches high.
Well, and I just wanna share a few of the other things that happened. So his neighbor kitty-corner from him, Bonnie Moore, came from South Side of Chicago. They were on the same Navy ship. Not at the same time, but they found out when we had our little group meet that they served on the same Navy ship. There's their house, and then a house, and then another house. They both lived there for 32 years. Never knew each other's names, right? And now they know each other, right? The house next to them, you guys actually started your own little walking club in the beginning of the summer. We had two neighbors that live across the street from each other. Both came from Palatine, lived in apartment buildings right next to each other, never knew each other. And so now they know each other. And one of the neighbors, he actually shared with the group that he moved here from Palatine, and his mortgage is less than his rent was. He has mortgage and taxes is less than his rent was. And he now has a yard, a school that he really appreciates with his kids, and he feels like he found the American dream, right? And so that's the work. But ironically, it was him who... We get a text message because we went on a group text. And while they were in the Philippines, a kid knocked over their mailbox. So he chased this kid down, brought him back, took his picture, made him write a note saying, "I'm sorry," with his phone number, and left it in the door for them, right? Now, had he not known them, that never would've happened. And I've been living in that neighborhood for 26 years. And I can tell you, it is not the same neighborhood by any stretch of the imagination. It is so different knowing your neighbors. So I just really challenge everybody next year, because we will be doing this. And we actually got a $250 grant from Wintrust to do promotions on it. And so we're working with Steven Angelos to do a promotional video. And this group will be in the video talking about the stories of what happened to be able to share for next year. So the last two prizes, we actually did a drawing because only two people on the team could win.
We have a ride along with the Zion Fire Department from Melissa Van Duzen. And we have a ride along with the Zion Police Department for Bonnie Moore.
Yeah, so cool. I just wanna thank, you know, everybody. The Park District really came out and supported the kids in doing this project. The high school, the grade school, the library, the city. It was just a really phenomenal foundation laid. And I'm looking forward to next year it being something that absolutely impacts our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. And thank you for all the effort and time that you've put into it. And a round of applause for Sherri. Last but not least, on the special presentations, I guess it was just a little less than four years ago. On the... It was the first weekend in April. There was an election on April 7th, I believe it was. And on April 5th, we had a tragic event happen in our community where a young man was shot and killed by one of our police officers. And we had a... We then had a visit with the gentleman from the Department of Justice out of Chicago. And he asked what... He was talking to us about what the community was doing and how are we moving forward. And one of the things that I had talked about when I was campaigning was that I wanted to get an advisory group in the city just to help the city, the city council, understand the issues, to talk to us about economic development and a lot of things in Zion. And when the gentleman from the Department of Justice found out what we were doing, he was extremely pleased, and we formed a group that became known as Cubs. And for all of you that are wondering what that means, it's Citizens United for a Better Zion, even though I am a White Sox fan. But I thought, so many of you are Cubs fans. We thought that we would do something that was at least kinda cute. And it's gone... The organization has gone through changes over the last four years. And we are adopting a new set of bylaws tonight, later in the meeting. But I wanted to present some, a certificate of appreciation to some of the people who have been involved in the organization since it started. They've worked hard, put in a lot of hours. And we just wanna let them know that we appreciate their efforts. So when I call your name out, would you come forward? Mike, would you hand these out? I'll pass them down this way. Here, why don't you... Yeah. The certificate reads, a certificate of appreciation, the Citizens United for a Better Zion Cubs. This certificate is proudly presented to Ginny Adams for recognizing the value of partnership between residents and the City of Zion and being dedicated to creating a healthy, connected community. So Ginny, would you come up? Kathy Champagne, I know she's not here. Gina Copan. David Ferment. Janee Latif is not here. Michael McCauley. Ashley Mader. Madeline Santana. Kim Whiteside. Sue Whipple. Doug Carlson. And Rebecca Burton. Thank you all very, very much for working with our community. And let's get one more picture if we can. How you guys doing?
We got a wide lens. We gotta whip it close.
Cuddle up around Mike.
Perfect, perfect.
This is just a small part of the group. There were 39 people that were involved in Cubs from the beginning, so...
Explain, right there. One more, please. Right there. Perfect. Item number six on the agenda is citizens' comments. Mr. Clyde Mclemore.
Good evening, council members and mayor. I'm here on behalf of Black Lives Matter Lake County Chapter. We're hosting our third annual banquet on November the 4th, Sunday, at the Marcus Square Inn Hotel here in Zion at 2723 Sheridan. We have guest speaker, Mr. John Crawford. He's coming here to Zion, Illinois. Mr. John Crawford is the father of John... John Crawford Jr. is the father of John Crawford III, who was shot and killed in Ohio going to buy a BB gun with his girlfriend and walked through the store in Walmart with the BB gun. And he was shot, killed. His father has a foundation. He's coming here to speak. Also, we have an opening speaker, which is Gil Walker. Gil Walker is the founder of Midnight Basketball, which exploded and went all over the world. He's the founder of it, and he's coming here to Zion to speak, November the 4th. Got flyers on that. But I wanna use my other three minutes on something else. We just got through having this last meeting. Y'all did a vote about taking the back-to-bag signs off of city property, right? You took them off of city property, but you got them in the office. You got them in the offices. People have them in their offices. So I'm like, wow, you know, I'd rather you put them back out there. If that's the case, if you go, you know, put them out there. I had a text you, mayor, about my political signs because I noticed when it comes around to political time, all the time is the laws is no signs on the curb, which is right on the right of way, you know? Which is right, even though Zion don't have that many. In some areas, you know, you just have to put a sign, or you can't put a sign. So I've been threatened by Mr. Eisen. I was told if any of my signs show up in Salem again, they gonna charge me $5 a sign. So I said, okay, you know, I'm gonna take... I take threats. But I drove around the city, saw the city was cleaned up. Wasn't no signs on the curb. So I was cool. I ain't putting no signs out there. Sunday morning, happened to be driving down 27th Street. Right on 27th and ECHOCL Street. Yeah, right there on the corner, there's another... And they took... The city took that back-to-bag sign. It's another one, brand new, fresh. You know what I'm saying? And I'm like, okay, I don't have a problem with it. Even though I don't respond to the back-to-bag. I do... I bag the badge. I bag the water department. I bag the finance department. I bag the city council. I bag it all, you know what I'm saying? But what I'm saying is, if it goes... It's still the laws. If I got to be charged $5 for my sign, then everybody else should too. Thank you. I wanna give y'all these flyers.
Thank you, Mr. Mclemore. Item number seven on the agenda is the consent agenda. Would the clerk please read the consent agenda?
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on September 18th, 2018 at 7:00 p.m. Approval but not release of closed session minutes of a meeting held on September 18th, 2018 at 8:27 p.m. Bills voucher 130278 through 130502 drawn on Huntington National Bank. Total $1,225,410.50.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number eight is consider passing ordinances as follows. Eight A is to lease certain property located in Zion. The right of way south of the building located at 2260 through 2264 Sheridan Road, per Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Team J.K. Group requested to lease a portion of 23rd Street right of way to meet the minimum parking requirement. This is the annual renewal.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number eight B is amending Zion Municipal Code, Chapter Two, Administration, Section 2-32, to provide for elected officials' compensation, per Mayor Hill. You have a... Information in front of you that lists the compensation for the elections coming up, the mayor and commissioners, for anyone elected in 2019. And it'll set those salaries for the next four years. They are exactly the same salaries that we have right now. There is a reference in there to fiscal year. And I would ask that the fiscal year comment be struck. And it just said each commissioner elected to office shall receive the following annual compensation. May 1 of 2019 is $15,400, and it will remain that way in 2019, 2020, 2021, and 2022. The mayor elected to office in 2019 shall receive the following annual compensation. $35,000 per year for 2019, 2020, 2021, and 2022. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item nine is discussion authorization and approval. Nine A is tabulation of bid, various demolitions in the city, per Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item bid results for the demolitions of 3149 27th Street, 1820 Irman, 1907 Hubron, 2319 Heliad. Continental Construction, $59,200. Sea Force Construction, Inc., $68,900. Campanella Sons, Inc., $122,685. Peterson Excavation, $137,430. Staff is recommending the lowest responsible bidder, Continental Construction, for $59,200. Expenses for the demolitions will be covered through a $75,000 grant received by Illinois Housing Development Authority. Remaining funds will be used for utility disconnects, asbestos testing, and containment. You notice there's two bid opening result sheets. The original sheet in error was made of Continental Construction. It was written down to $60,000. It was actually $59,000.
Is there a motion?
So moved, except the lowest bid.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item nine B is consider approval of Cubs Commission bylaws for Mayor Hill. What you have in front of you is the changed bylaws that Cubs will be operating under as it moves forward. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion?
Just a question, mayor. What's the nature of the changes?
The nature of... What had happened is that the original group had a fairly narrow focus, which was primarily information going out, information coming in, if there were any serious concerns or serious incidents that happened. The group grew, and it took on many different functions that it was too much for this type of thing. So we're narrowing the focus. And if we decide that we wanna go in that direction again, it would be a different group. Which is... It's getting back to the original function of the organization. So we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Is there just further discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item nine C is consider 2018 Board of Commission appointments for Mayor Hill. I have a whole list here, and you have a list in front of you. Do we need to do these one at a time, or do we do them all?
Do it in mass.
Okay, we will approve these in mass. If you have any questions or objections to someone that you don't want appointed and needs discussion, please bring it up. Accident Review Board is Commissioner Deteen, Mr. Blake Rogers, Jeff Penich, and Rich Ianson. Citizens United for a Better Zion Commission, Dave Ferment, Noel Harris, Ashley Mader, Rebecca Burton, Janice Albright, Richard Fryerson, Colette Davis, Jackie Holmes, Kim Whiteside, Gina Copan, Madeline Santana, Ginny Adams, and Margie Taylor. The Electric Commission, Electrical Commission is Rich Ianson, Merlin Kreis, John Lewis, Dave Geir, Pat Buchanan, and John Hucker. The Fire Pension Board is Dave Nabel. The Fire Police Commission is John Idleberg. Jubilee Days Commission is Steve Dumian, Carla Villalobos, John Lewis, and Rich Walker. Lake Mount Cemetery Board, Cheryl Spooner, Blake Rogers, and Dave Nabel. The Liquor Control Commission is Terry McNabb. Planning and Zoning Commission, Madeline Santana. Police Pension Board, Dave Nabel. And the Tiff Review Board, Margie Taylor and Marilyn Krieger. Is there a motion to approve the appointments?
So moved.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Number 10 is departmental commentary. The department heads have anything they'd like to report? Chief Lewis?
Most people should be aware by now if you see any of the...
Most people should be aware by now, if you see any of the, heard it on the news, sometimes on the radio, tomorrow at 1:18 will be FEMA's first wireless emergency alert test. So if you have a smartphone that's capable, and you're somewhere at 1:18, it's going to go off. And it's going to have an alert on it, it's going to say Presidential Alert, and it's going to pop and say, this is a test. Two minutes later, they're going to do the usual emergency alert system on your radios and TVs. So if you're in a public building, beware. A lot of phones are suddenly going to be going eh eh eh. And I don't know if you can silence that or not, I've never tried it, performs on silence. I don't know if it vibrates, or that just overrides it.
We'll find out.
Anything else? I've just got something that I'd like to bring up. Mr. Macklemore brought up political signs, and I have directed the city staff, the board doesn't know, but at my direction, many of you are aware that the city's going to be, is putting a referendum on the ballot in November for whether we should go to home rule or not. And the city staff members are not allowed to spend any time working either for or against the home rule issue while they're working and on city time. And there were someone, we, someone had placed a no-to-home-rule sign on public property, and the, one of the, our inspectors picked it up, which is what he was supposed to do and is supposed to do according to our city code, because it was on the public right-of-way. I've instructed the Building Department that from now on, with no-home-rule signs, we are going to pick them up and place them on the nearest private property. We will not be doing that with any political signs. The rationale is that anybody who is involved in putting out political signs should know where they can and cannot go. Since the no-home-rules issue is a one-time issue, a lot of people are not going to know where they're supposed to go. They're not going to know where public property is. So we're going to make a one-time exception. I've directed them to make a one-time exception to the policy to pick them up, and rather than putting them in the back of the truck, put them to the, put them to the nearest property. I don't want anyone to get the impression that city workers are out trying to defeat the no-home-rule people by picking up their signs and putting them in the back of the truck. So we will not be touching those. We will touch every other sign that's on public property. The announcements, October 15th, from noon, 12 noon to 2:00 PM, there'll be a home rule information meeting right here in City Hall. October 16th, 6:15 PM, there'll be a Zion Township Board meeting. October 16th at 7:00 PM, there'll be a Zion City Council meeting. October 28th, 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM, the Zion Trick-or-Treat Hours. And November 6th at 7:00 PM, Zion City Council meeting. Item number 12 is we are in need of a closed session pursuant to 5 ILCS 120/2 open meetings for the discussion of collective bargaining and personnel. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
You have a motion and a second, is there discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
Due to the fact that we have a couple birthdays here, no one, not anyone, sang happy birthday to the mayor or David. Now, I didn't ask him how old he was, because I wanted to live a little longer. But I think it would be nice if we could all join together, sing happy birthday to our honored guests for tonight. And the lovely lady that was serving the cake was the mayor's wife. So it was, and it was good cake, I tell you. So let us sing together.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear mayor. Happy birthday to you.
Now we're going to closed session.